Okay.
I wanna go already.
Hello room.
I'm tired of waiting. I just wanna go.
We can if you want to.
I'd say let's go.
Fair enough.
Nemesis.
Your favor has been cashed in and waiting.
Father, I'm not gonna have to stand all day, right? There are plenty of benches. I see. I like this one.
Very well.
Seems everyone is going to be performing a, uh... ...fashion of a late entrance. Hopefully, we're all doing fine.
You'd think so.
Oh, absolutely.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Will Mr. Malus be joining us? Or is he too, you know, still going over his injury?
He's critical condition right now.
Very well.
If he does end up joining us tonight, it will be under the pretense of, uh, artificial intelligent hologram.
Ah, very well.
That would make sense why he's not been answering my calls. I didn't know it was that bad, I'm sorry.
It's alright. Um, it's not, but thank you for your condolences.
If there's anything I can do to be assistance with the healing process, please let me know.
Thank you. Your name?
Thank you kindly.
Kudrick. A pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you. My name is Keon.
It's a pleasure to meet you, Ms. Keon. And then you are back there.
Evangeline Evans. I am the secretary. Ms. Keon, how about you have a seat? It's gonna be a while.
I'm not used to... ...big seats. She lived always just in her small office. So this is no to me.
Very well.
Not real when you get to.
Don't.
As we all have been now acquainted... I think, uh, we can start this meeting unless anyone has anything to bring up before we start. No? Very well. Looks like Jobot is, well... Not here at the moment as well. Very well. I understand some things have happened... ...the past week. Troubling news. Nemesis.
Yes.
But not your case.
Multiple, in fact. A council member has been attacked on my streets. However, the reason of this occurring is because you did not have permission to enter my district. Nor informed me upon these said agreements between me and Hamsky. And if I am aware, you were not informed either, Hamsky.
I wasn't.
Therefore...
I'm gonna let you continue. Of course.
If you wanna speak on his behalf, speak now.
Oh, I will. I would just like to let you finish first. I don't want to interrupt in any form or way until you've, uh, finished talking.
Therefore, punishment will be given.
Proceed along with your case. We'll discuss that more so afterwards.
Secondly... I have heard word that multiple... ...gang members, specifically Whisperers. During the conflict of Malius and firing upon him... Stated that it was their street. As well as that they wanted him dead. This only occurred... Because they wanted to go dealing with an agreement between me, Aki, and Hamsky. However... They were uncontrolled. Outright attacking someone on the streets when the agreement was just to deliver... And leave. So I'm going to let Hamsky speak up. For what he is going to rule... For the meat rack. Specifically, then I will continue from mine.
I think, from here on out, Malius and the Whisperers aren't allowed at the meat rack. And anyone that comes to the meat rack... Has to talk to me first. At least, me. And Nemesis at some point. Um... Nemesis said everything I wrote down. The Whisperers said to Malius, "We don't like people like you..." "...in our streets." And I spoke up and corrected him. And he tried to correct himself by saying, in general, "down there." Which I had warned Malius, and I have also warned Aki... That they shouldn't say they are councilmen... At the meat rack. Because people will throw things at them, people will shoot them, they will take any shot they can get. Both of you... Decided... You would just say it. Also, some big motherfucker was down there? Uh, looked like a fucking mudkip or something? He said, "Keep your people safe," so I am assuming... That it was premeditated. They planned it. If he looked at me and said that during the little altercation... Uh, one of the Whisperers' names was, uh, Brendan. I want him, if he's alive.
There are only two survivors from that altercation, and I currently have them both. Neither of them are him.
Sorry, I'm going over my notes, cuz Nemesis covered most of it. I, I think that is everything. I am denying... The Whisperers and Malius from entering the meat rack. Even if... They come down, we are forcing them out.
Meaning the dealing is cancelled... Permanently.
Right then. So what are your demands?
Would you like the next... Events that have occurred, and that I can go over demands?
Very well.
I have also been informed of some new... Arrivals of the waterfront. In fact, there was a spike... A day before. There was a planned... A visit... You could say. Of no. A week before, the spike of cybercycosis was high. Then a day after their meeting... It dipped. Very low.
Interesting.
This is for the waterfront. Secondly... The ZPD and the waterfront has been liquidated... Completely. At this point.
The regular moves.
And lastly... Something I have found out... Is Zaris has returned.
I've heard of these things. It seems like it might be a copycat. We'll proceed with it later.
That is all for now. For the altercations that have occurred... My demands... Is the Whisperers are not allowed, period, to enter the waterfront. If they do... They will be apprehended.
No.
Until further notice, this... Is one of them.
Now, I'm pretty sure-
Second-
District Zero does a lot of imports towards District Zero. Is that correct, Aki?
I'm sorry, could you say again?
I'm pretty sure District Zero does a lot of imports from waterfront, right, District Zero?
Uh, we do. On occasion, yes.
Do you use these-
That will continue.
-to transport, at least?
Oh, n- no, not at all. Uh...
Hmm, just making sure.
We transport goods via the correct means.
Hmm, just making sure you're covered, your, your, your bases are covered, so you're not being dried up.
Yeah, do keep in mind that these are criminals. Yes, we do try to maintain and control them as best we can, but... This was not... Something that we could ever plan for.
Well, it seems to me it was planned. From what Hamsky has told me.
Also, this is not the first time this has happened. They just seem like... They're uncontrollable.
Me-
Well, you know what, maybe he should speak for himself. Hex, please? I'm not gonna ask again.
Evening, councilors. I hope you are all well.
If you don't know who this is, this is Toku Odar. The leader of the Whisperers.
It's a pleasure to make your acquaintance. I suppose... I should begin with some... Explanations in regards to a few things that have happened. These Whisperers that entered within the meat rack... They were fanatics. They were not under my orders. These people are tired and sick... Of the destruction what, what Malius McKay has done to their lives. All of you may have not seen this, cuz you were busy with other matters. But we have lived it throughout the entire year. As I said... I did not plan this, nor did I order this, as I knew this would be suicide. However, the Whisperers are large. There are many of them within District Zero, and sometimes... Criminals tend to overextend their reach... And take things into their own hands. I did not mean to disrespect your deal, Mr. Hamsky. And I do hope we can do business in the future... Under a more tighter and secure grip. And I would like to open your eyes, councilmembers... To something that has been happening throughout the year. Something you should all be aware of, of Malius McKay. With your permission, that is.
Proceed.
Malius McKay has been constructing his own little private military of gang members named the Tigers. Previously, in the past, the Whisperers have had control over most districts in a... City-based state. They would control different trades and the like, and keep people protected from the dangers of... People like, um... Zaris and the like in the past. However, this has changed a lot throughout the year. Tigers... Another gang in yellow coats started to spread quickly... And quite frantically throughout all of your districts. He has been seeding... A criminal empire under your very noses. Now, you'll be asking for proof, and... I didn't come completely empty-handed. Personally, I could give my own accounts... Of seeing Malius McKay in the very flesh, discussing with Tigers, but I doubt you'd believe me. What I can offer you and give you... Is one of his creations from Malius Industries. In the past, we have encountered these Prometheans, as they are designated. In my possession... Is one of those pistols that was in the very district... Of District Zero. Attacking the poor, innocent people that live there. I also have the body... Of this, which has been brought to you all today, so you may examine it... And look over it extensively. But I do suggest that you do not let Malius and his people get their fingers on it first. I would prefer there be no... Alterations made.
The bot.
Let's wait until live here.
The issue with it, as I see it, is we all have somewhat of our own private military. What we do within our own districts... Well... Is for our own businesses and sake. The only people I've seen- The only people I've seen within my own district... Fine enough, were just the Whisperers. I believe, I don't know if he's still in control, or that, uh, Old Ali is still around... But he did send a bunch of Whisperers... Into my place, trying to buy me off, or letting them do their business there. I have yet to see any Tigers, though.
If I may. I've personally seen and witnessed... Uh... Those in green, and not only those in green, but the civilians of District Zero... Held underfoot by a group called the Tigers. They wear yellow, same as what Toku has explained. The only problem is, there is no evidence to link them to Malius McKay, aside from personal accounts of which I cannot corroborate those. However... This is more than enough reason to launch a official investigation, I do believe. Those are hefty accusations, and it's our jurisdiction.
Hmm... Aki, I know you said you've been trying to most likely work with these, uh, individuals here, correct?
Specifically, the Whisperers, yes, sir. The fact that I bring Toku here today, I hope, um, is a sign of that.
Did they represent District Zero? Do we-
They are our people.
Represent, did you say? Represent.
They are our people, and they do live within our district, and we do conduct business with them... Where we can.
Are they directly under your father's employ?
They were, for a time, but when Mr. O'Daly went missing-
Hmm... And that means that... The code has not been broken. So I don't see any applications needed. This is between them... And the Whisperers.
Hey, Papa.
Hmm.
Can I say something?
Go for it.
Hey, Nemesis. I hope you're still sharp, cuz that guy in the hologram still hasn't give you proof... That he wasn't the one who gave the order.
I am aware.
I hope you're not just taking his word for it. That'd be kinda funny.
Regardless... If the Prometheans is... Of Malius's make... They are his property. If founded in District Zero, that would be something that we work with, will Aki and Malius, perhaps?
Hamsky knows... The gang member said, "Toku Odar sends his regards." But saying that's probably dangerous.
Proceeded to look over the manufacture of everything here. And we can do it live, in front of everybody. A whole studio audience, if you will. Wouldn't be that hard to do. And you have our word.
Hmm... Anything else, Aki?
I would like to assure you that Mr. Odar was not... Working against Mr. Malius McKay. Or to unbreak the deal that we made.
If they are not tied to you... Then this isn't an issue between me or you.
May I speak on Malius's behalf soon?
I... Go for it.
Oh, wonderful. Ah! Hello, everybody. My name is Keon. I am the Chief Relations Officer of Malius McKay. It's very nice to meet you. Now, I do want to state a couple of things. First and foremost, to Hamsky... I do apologize for how everything went down. There was no way we could have foreseen what would have happened. And I thank you-
Uh, wha- wha-
For protecting my boss as best as you can. When I speak on this floor... I expect silence. If I have a question for you, I will ask of it. For now, wait until the end. I thank you... For taking care of my boss. And for making sure he was safe. However... I do understand that my boss, Mr. McKay... Received a, uh... How many bullet wounds was it, Evangeline?
Big number. Twenty-eight.
Hmm, twenty-eight critical wounds. And yes, your security was there, but from the footage that I saw... Well... There wasn't enough. No one was surrounding a council member to make sure that he was safe. Everyone was sparse and scattered about. And they continued to shoot at him. So I apologize for this entity that was there, serving as his main security, to try and fight back. They are their own person, after all. Wanting to make sure that... Someone, as Mr. McKay... Is safe. And I apologize about how it got a little bit out of control on their part. But what was my boss supposed to do? What was his security supposed to do? May I remind you... That there wasn't just tiny little Whisperers running about. No! There was a giant motherfucker there! I think we all need to remember that, and the only time we've ever seen a giant motherfucker to that extent is within the Whisperers. Am I incorrect on that assumption?
If I may?
Hmm... Course.
You would be incorrect in that assumption. Tigers, now, here's a bit of a... Something you'll need to lock into as well. Tigers have been creating these serums for as long as I can remember, which in turn create, as you say, these large motherfuckers. They have started a drug war since about a year ago. To which we have tried to combat in our own regards. But these serums... Have been constantly brought up and challenged and transported throughout District Zero, and most likely throughout your other districts.
Have you seen it within your districts, Sachi?
No.
What he's saying is true.
Understood.
There are formal reports in the ZPD of District Zero regarding them.
Understood. I can admit when I am incorrect. And I will apologize on that behalf. However... I do want to point out a certain little thing. Um, Aki, was it?
Uh, yes.
Where's your father?
Uh... At home, at the tower. He is, uh-
Not a single call, not a single note, not a single page, if you will. Uh, is that correct, Evangeline? Not a single word from him? Not a apology, not a talk, not a... Whole, "Let's discuss this over tea." I mean, after all, this was the Whisperers, or the Whisperers, may I add, quotations... That sent their regards, and words spread like wildfire. And let us not forget that it is under Toku's rule, which still leaves me a little baffled considering he is here today. It almost feels like a joke at some points. A whole big ol' satire. However... If I may... Um, Malius wanted me to bring this up. But your father has done nothing to help in any form of regard for the past how many months, Sachi?
About a year.
Ah, a whole year?
Possibly more.
Malius wants me to... Malius wants me to inform that I think it's about time... That we... Have him stepped down. And since his son is doing a far better job than he ever has, I think it's about time that he has taken a seat. Technically, he already has, but in a more... Formal sense. There's no point in him being a representative of his father when he's doing far more than his father has ever done in the past year.
While you say this, the relation with the Whisperers is not under his father, but Aki himself. If there's a mistake with the Whisperers, it's not with his father, it's with the decisions he has made.
He can speak for himself.
No offense, but speaking to you all is something you have to learn, and he has not, obviously.
Then let him do so.
I want to hear it from him.
Is this true?
My father did do dealings with Mr. O'Daly in the past, and then after, um... A couple months, he went missing, and dealings stopped. I picked up the dealings again because I wanted us to re-establish maintaining control of crime within our district. So yes, it is, I guess, my responsibility. And not my father's. My father has recently... My father has recently, uh, I guess, picked up the pieces after me. But I did cause, I guess, things to start moving with the Whisperers again.
The good or negative way?
There is never a negative way. Punch.
I guess you're right. Well... Either way, I have yet to see any form of action from your father. Despite anything. And Malius is very adamant on progress. He's very adamant and a firm believer of putting forward your work and showing it. However, that is not what your father has done. And so, lack of it makes him question his seat. And think you'd be a better suit for somebody else. And since you're already taking the reins, it might as well be you. But that is a conversation for when he is well. I do have a demand from Mr. McKay. There, since there is no proof... The board is listening. And Mr. McKay has asked a question. The question being, "Why are you here, Toku? Why are you here in hologram form and not really here? And what proof do you have that you haven't performed this assassination? What makes us believe that your word of mouth is of any proof at all? For all we know, it could be a whole bunch of gibberish. Taking the piss out of it practically. Now... If you really did send your regards, your regards were received. After all, Mr. McKay is in critical condition, and can barely even move. If you have anything you wish to say to Mr. McKay, if you want an audience with him, you could merely just ask. And matter of fact, you can right now! He is listening, after all. So go ahead. You have the floor.
Very well. The reasoning for me being with you all today and taking up your very, very precious time was to show you this disease of Tigers. While you may have not seen it, or that, uh...
I believe I am...
I believe there's a regards into my safety that would be in danger. Forgive me all! Forgive me all, but... Well, there's a bit of a difference between me and Aki, isn't there? He is a council member. I am but a lowly gang member.
We would have given you sanction.
Forgive me, but I'm not willing to take a word of a council who has not decided to take care of its own people for years!
If you come here now, you will be safe. I will assure it, that you will be safe here. However, if you do not, there will be consequences.
If I may?
Go.
Mr. Toku is safe within District Zero's tower. It was not his idea. It was our own. It was to keep him safe, yes. We didn't want things to be tense. He is only under the orders of...
Hey, Aki. If you want to sound convincing, you don't show up as a hologram. That's only what a coward does.
Well... Shall we continue, Sachi?
Hmm.
Apologies.
Anything else? You're fine.
I have one more demand of Mr. Malius McKay. If you wish to speak with him, you may do so. Under a one-on-one meeting. However, he does believe that you should be behind bars, but he will give you this moment to discuss things. You obviously have something you wish to say to him. But he wants you to do it properly. One-on-one. Only you. Nobody there, in disguise or in the shadows.
You gave me, if I take a word with... A grain of salt, but I've heard that all before. Nor can I truly ensure my safety in that regard, so I must be cautious. How about Malius meets me, and I will offer the same conditions? In a location I decide.
I'm sorry, but didn't you state yourself as a lowly ca- uh, not even a council, a lowly gang member just a moment ago?
I can also be a rations host and a gentleman.
To reprieve. If Malius is listening.
The board demands justice. I demand justice.
Hmm. If justice is what you want... Nemesis. Can you bring those out your front?
Henry. Here, now.
Where the fuck are we now? Well, yes. Stands before you are two Whisperers. Malius demands justice. His board demands justice. So... Will you be able to provide?
With all due respect, this isn't justice.
What?
If I'm gonna go ahead and speak on what I've been trying to speak on in the last thirty minutes, which is something that I feel obligated to remind the rest of you, which is that the ZMF is currently breathing down your necks and carrying out things like this in such an archaic way is every reason for why they're here. The police exists for a reason, we are the ones that enact justice fairly. Let us do a formal investigation.
Lono.
I agree with Lono.
It is our job. It is why we exist.
Fine. Athena. Get there.
I add, these are two innocent Whisperers. I have the ones who are a part of the instance in captivity currently.
Regardless, they're still criminals, am I correct?
Everyone is a criminal here.
A message does need to be made.
I don't think it'll be made with just two unnamed
No. But I know how he might like this. Aki.
I guess. We always have to do things that we don't like doing.
If anything, they'll be taken towards the Guardian District. But... If Malius would like to watch.
Do you wish to say that out loud, everybody, Mr. McKay? Think it was better from your mouth.
Here it is.
I will put...
Put that little hologram going.
There you go. Mr. McKay, are you there?
They're probably removing the breathing apparatus, give it a bit. On that, he walked out of the meat rack of his own volition on his own two feet, no assistance. So what critical condition is he really in? You think you can provide medical records?
I can... We can. And as far as I remember, I do remember Evangeline being there in a hologram form to make sure he was fine. And he did indeed need assistance from a coworker of his named Dame. She had to hold on to him to make sure he didn't collapse.
We do have the medical records, but that's not to be seen by anybody, obviously. Personal information, you should know your tricks, officer, sustain your land.
No. Come over here.
I won't leave them to the wolves, sorry.
Also, if you kill these ones, that is not helping anyone, that's causing more chaos.
No one is going to die.
No one.
Hit shit again.
Excuse me, sir. Hello, hello.
Hello, Malius.
Yes, you can be heard.
Hello, everyone. Forgive my absence. You see, I'm quite incapable of too much travel these days. Assaulted in this very city, in the water district. Keon, apologize for my stead. I believe I regret not informing both of you of my arrival that day. And for the chaos I caused.
You'll be alright.
You have my apologies heartfelt to the bone. As for these nameless, faceless citizens who have done nothing wrong, they are to be set free. I do not wish to harm these ones. They have families, after all. They have jobs. They have a life. We shouldn't seek to punish them without any concrete proof, after all. However, I do want the one responsible. I want Toku. Your father harbors him, yes. Aki. Why? Why does he harbor an assassin?
Again, that is a bold statement to make. I don't think Toku O'Dar is an assassin, or attempted to have you assassinated, sir. These were extremists because I have done dealings with Mr. Zero.
Where's your proof?
If you will not take his word, then at least take mine. We had dealings with other districts and intended to do good. We intended to feed the meat rack with fresh food, even. He wouldn't risk that. He wouldn't risk his family. It just doesn't make sense or add up.
So we are to believe this rogue faction of Whisperers is hunting down all of us in the council? My brothers, my sisters, we are in danger. In our very home. We must do something, we must act. They sent his regards. So this is our pathway. Kenzo and Toku. And the fact that both of them aren't here at the moment is proof enough for me? Physically, here.
Again, his father had no involvement.
Council of Zephira. I am officially putting up a wanted for Toku O'Dar. And if Kenzo continues to harbor him, I will march straight to the tower, Aki, and kill your father.
That goes against the code. You know this.
Malius, we do have, uh, deals with the Whisperers still. Malius, we do have deals with the Whisperers still. They keep our cities...
They're on their payroll.
It is complicated at the moment.
If you attack him... It becomes open season for everyone, and it'll just be what the ZMF wants.
If I may... The population crisis of Guardian District has been relieved for the most part. And I am willing to open up prisoner transports from District Zero to Guardian District. For this justice that you would like, I could also take Kenzo and Toku into custody of Guardian District. And try the other, if you are willing to say.
You said Kenzo, my father, into what?
Kenzo... He's still... Aki is a representation of Kenzo. He is still a council member in his own right. Yes, he hasn't been done anything, but he has done enough to make sure that he's still able to stabilize things within his own district. Albeit, that has been chaotic for the past year or so.
Father, if I may... They did say by their own admission... That... He is in their tower. Would this not imply that... They are in control, and thus, it would have already broken the code? They have not made a clear statement on whether or not that they are actually in control of the Whisperers or not. They keep going back and forth, Father.
The bottom line is, these dealings with the Whisperers are personal. Aki was seeing to do something good for the people of this city, and that is what had at least attempted to occur. It is not proven that Toku is the reason that Mr. Malius was attacked. It is easy to assume these things as he is the leader, but then it is just as easy to assume that maybe Aki was the one who put Toku up to it in the first place. We have no facts, we have no proofs, we have assumptions. And if his father needs to prove his place and do his job, then let us do that. If an investigation on the Whisperers needs to be taken... Exactly, that's the problem. You want Aki to take power and show responsibility, yet you are not holding him to the responsibility that he has brought upon himself. It is not what his father and the Whisperers have done, it is Aki's dealings. He is young, he makes mistakes, and what's to say, again, that it was even Toku's idea? Maybe everything they've said is true. But we won't know that until we look into it. And as the Whisperers are within District Zero, we have no problem investigating that, with the aid of others if need be.
Would that be okay with you? Malius.
Mr. McKay.
Toku... My boy, you said you brought... Proof... That I'm behind the Tigers. You accuse me while also sending assassins. Please, I want to see your proof. I think we all do.
The physical proof he was mentioning before is not the connection to you and the Tigers, but the connection to that you had been in District Zero previous, causing problems.
That is not what Toku had said.
As I had previously talked with him before, that is the reason I brought the evidence.
He accuses me of far greater crimes.
And he has no proof of that but his word and what he has seen, in which I warned him would hold no grounds here.
But yet he says that he has one of our properties. You're running in circles, dear. I do wish to see it.
Aki... You need to speak more, you were sitting in the chair.
And he is a representative...
Hear your voice.
I do agree that she is talking...
Yes, she's speaking for his behalf a little too much.
That does allow Aki a permit, it, but... We need to come with a consensus, because at this point, we're generally talking in circles. Aki...
This decision is yours, because you resent your father. Perform an investigation into the Whisperers.
I feel like Toku should be in custody.
Not Malius's.
Like Mr. Gildir suggested. And Malius to work alongside you with this investigation.
Or his company.
If I can speak boldly, um, I guess, for a second... If we remove Toku from power, then who is going to control the rest of the Whisperers? There is a reason he is in control, and there's a reason... That crime sometimes is rampant.
I thought you had said that you were practically also in charge of the Whisperers to an extent. Wouldn't that mean that you would be the next best thing? And to be fair, if there are fanatics of Whisperers running amok using your name, I would see this as a very big crisis on your hands, because that just means more of this situation will just pop up. So if anything, you should be more than... Willing to do this. So why do you... Fight against it?
Because they are still... They are people... In Zephira.
Yes.
And the more we kill people and throw them in prison and find the easy option to remove people, the quicker things like this happen. It's why crime is more rampant, because nobody trusts the council. They do not trust us.
Well... That is why we do this quickly. If Toku is to be into custody, then that gives you a more... Willing start to push this investigation. Don't you agree?
Toku is a figure in District Zero. If we do that, that would probably cause riots amongst the Whisperers.
Then it'll give you more of an ample reason to find the fanatics.
If I can give you some advice, Aki, these two have already been permitted to live. Let them tell the tale.
Citizens...
What?
Your leader, Toko, says... That I've scorned you. Is that true? Am I that much of an enemy... To this gang of yours?
At this point, I don't even know anymore.
Only thing we've ever dealt with for the Tigers...
It's just been fighting.
I don't have much reason...
Only to live, survive. You don't join a gang because you want to fucking fight some grand enemy, you want to join a gang because you need somewhere to live. Food on your plate.
And honestly, right now, Zephira is not really doing a good job of that.
I fail you. I am deeply sorry, both of you. This council has failed you. But we hope to... Rectify that. We seek harmony. However... Some sicknesses must be purged. Again, Toku, you said you brought a Promethean. You accuse me of conspiring with the Tigers.
I have the Promethean, yes, and you're more than welcome to look over it. Well, all of them except you, just for continuity's sake and keeping things... Unbiased. And fair. I'd be more comfortable with Councilman Nemesis, or Caldea, or even Councilman Saji having a look at your... Toy. And yes, I'm not afraid to admit it and speak up. I do see you connected with the Tigers. I have seen you personally. We spoke briefly, actually. Long time ago.
I remember. It wasn't that long ago, was it?
It's nearly been a year. The day I lost my eye.
I do not mind the other scene. The Promethean.
Well, I can't bring it in. I'm not there.
Toku.
Excuse me.
The transport is to come and get you immediately. With the council's protection. Will you appear here with it?
With all due respect, we do have two innocent Whisperers sitting at the end of our table. Due to you.
Innocent is a strong word.
Innocent in this situation.
I would like to hear Toku's response.
So you wish me to arrive here physically so you may arrest me? Am I understanding correctly? Well, from how the conversation is going, it seems that I will be arrested either way whether this ends.
If this proof is shown... And it is correct...
What proof exactly?
Of their said weapon. Then afterwards, yes.
I don't know if it'll happen. Do you not want to correct it?
Are the mage hunters not your weapons as well?
Yes. Yes, I know.
Yes.
There isn't much to really prove, I don't think. With all due respect, Toku, I... I don't think... Showing them the Promethean will change much.
No, then. Obviously, still... Malius's board still wants justice in its own way. But... Malius, if you're still here, what is it that you want? I know Toku, but obviously... That is a more difficult approach of things.
So you have come here... Seeking... Redemption in this matter? Without proof that you are not... Part of this assassination attempt? And also without this Promethean? I'm sorry, my fellows. But I have my own proof now. The invitation is open, Toku. Malius Industries headquarters. Our doors are open. As is mine. And the rest of you. I recommend keeping eyes behind your backs. We are all in danger these days. This is our time to... Embrace each other. We are a family. And family needs to look after each other. That will be all, Kion. Thank you.
You're welcome. Rest well.
Nemesis, you could take those that you brought in, and set them up.
Waiting room. Take them.
Ciao, ciao. Father?
I do believe it would be fair for Hamsky to say a few more words, considering it was his place that was under attack, and all that scrabble.
If Hamsky has any more words to say before I start talking...
Malius was told not to come to the meat rack. If I, a simple dumbass, knows not to go down there because people will be riled up, and cause an issue, and put people's lives in danger, then maybe Malius understands that. And I'm also a criminal, and this entire room seems like it's full of hypocrites.
No one's saying we're not. He is right. Now... As it stands... This is also obviously a problem. We have these fanatic Whisperers going around attacking council members, as Malius said, and it's happened. He has ZMF... Liquidating police stations... And waterfront. Certainly, there might even go through industrial or whatever the case is. I employ that... Aki... Run an investigation. Figure out what's going on with these fanatic Whisperers. Toku, next time we have a meeting... I will grant, we will grant you sanctions, you will not be arrested. You will not be harmed.
I graciously accept. Thank you. I do have some lasting comments I'd like to add, but I'll let you finish.
Obviously, Malius McKay's... People should work with Aki. Obviously, because he was harmed, hurt to the critical injuries that he has.
I'd like to inform you... Councilman, there seems to be a lot of confusion as to what Aki...
Councilman, there seems to be a lot of confusion as to what Aki's position actually is. Aki will not be performing any investigation. This is much bigger than him and will go to the proper councilman, as it is of dire importance. Leaving it to a child.
Oh, then would you... Kent, may you bring this up to Kenzo?
Of course. I'm aware some of you believe I am just a bodyguard, which is the case, or to some extent, but I am also his right hand.
Hmm, we know.
I am here to chauffeur, you may, but others do not. I'm here to chauffeur this one so he may learn. To put things on him like this is not something that will bode well. As much as you like to push the blame to his father, it was not his father. It was him, and he understands that. To baby him only puts thoughts of... grooming in one's head from an outside perspective. So if you would like for his father to prove his worth and do his job, then he will. We will conduct this investigation on the Whisperers with the help of Malius, whatever it may be, his personal company or otherwise. And we will do what we can.
Thank you. Is this, well, for... the party of Malius?
This is acceptable. Agreed, agreed, agreed.
Hmm, he gets too burned.
All due respect, if I may.
Yes.
I don't believe that this is fair terms. If this is supposed to be an impartial investigation into what happened in regards to the market... districts attacked, I guess Malius's attack. There has to be an impartial third party that oversees the investigation. It can't be somebody... from Aki's side, and it can't be somebody from Malius's side. It has to be somebody from outside.
Then you'll do it.
Do you agree upon this?
I do agree, yes. Considered all the insurance.
I do want to remind people that my father does take meetings. He recently had one with Officer Lono and... Toku.
Hmm. Very well then. Will be a TV screen or a radio this time?
Probably a hologram.
Very well. I would like to for, uh... apologize to Galda if you had anything to bring up. You may as well do so now.
I will make mine quick. To be blunt, status update: I've been again accepting test applicants within the new bounty network. So far, the vetting has been successful. Ion here has accepted the proposal to be the face of the new vigilante program.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Hmm, no. This one, to continue, I will give to Lythar. I have discussed the... situations of fanatics from the Whisperers and such, however, the same day that Mr. McKay certainly was attacked... we encountered, as I arrived shortly after... missionaries from Zoros.
Like I said, copycats possibly.
They attacked Lythar here.
If it happened in the waterfront, Waterfront shall look into it.
It happened outside your own zone.
Oh.
Then, then... Exactly.
We can't do anything about that. That is out of our jurisdiction.
But it happened outside of an establishment, not saying you have to do anything necessarily, but aware of where it occurred.
We'll look into it in the area.
I'll inform the kitsune sisters about it.
Only have one last thing. Just basic. This is the time of year that everyone hates at their sitting.
What is this?
The taxations of this year. I want you to write them down on the pads I have given you.
Oh my god.
And send them back to me. It is my job.
Yeah, alright, thanks Nemesis. You can nail it next time.
No. I have more enjoyment out of it.
Right. Before we adjourn this meeting... does anyone have anything else to bring up of the seats of the, uh, of the council?
I have one worry. There seems to be recently two accounts of councilmen entering in one way or another another person's district and... things happening. If this becomes a consistent thing, I feel like the punishments for it should be more apparent.
Hmm, if there's... a ban towards it, right? Garden District, I always allow those who are coming in as long as they keep their manners in check. I should just say it's for the same of you. But, like I said, if Waterfront doesn't want Malius or... well, they can't really stop a whole group, obviously.
Yes, we can. The Whisperers.
Which is understandable. It goes, hmm, it goes for both ends. Mr. Malius was attacked and two innocent, in this case Whisperers, were attacked.
Mm-hmm.
These things cannot keep happening, regardless of it's an eye for an eye. If that's the case, then this shouldn't be an issue whatsoever, but I assume that... other districts that are not Malius's own... taking in part of what they did... was not on his behalf.
I feel like the reason why it became such a big deal, because, yes, I've been into many other districts and I've been attacked... in other districts as well. But, the reason why it's such a big deal is, well, Hamsky boldly claiming that it's the safest place in the waterfront.
It was.
And as well... let me finish. And as well as these fanatic Whisperers attacking, also making it, well, look like it was a premeditated attack. So, if any of us are going into a district, please either inform another council member, or at least have security, because I myself... am not obligated to protect you within my own district.
I also believe that should extend to any personal... dealings, whether it be personal by yourself or ones you send. As both cases seem to be sent rather than personal.
Exactly. Anything else?
I have one, if I may.
Go ahead, Lemon.
As an officer of the law, I feel it's my responsibility and my duty to uphold said law. From what I've seen of the ZMF, they're going after corruption. And I'm obligated to warn you that if you go about this whole investigation in any other way but lawfully... then the ZMF will have every reason to not hold back against any of you. It is in your best interest to do this the right way. Not just for yourselves, but for the people that try to exist beneath you. Please, consider that.
Where are we with this, Lono?
That's all I have to say.
Anything else? Nemesis, Galda?
Toku? Just, uh, two things. Um, we'll not need to go into a discussion with it, at least on one of the topics, because I'm sure all of you want to get home. But one. It seems our dealings with the Meat Rack... became somewhat... public knowledge. A lot of people have seemed to be aware of this fact. On top of this, Malius McKay just so happily decides to... visit a place that we have so recently made affiliations with, without informing not only the council member, but the owner... of the Meat Rack. Now, this is just a penny for your thought. But perhaps... Malius... wanted to cause a little bit of political chaos. For all of us, just to have a little bit of fun. But, like I said...
As far as I know, we were unaware of your dealings with Hamsky until this very meeting, so...
Ma'am, all due respect.
You asked for silence when you spoke. Please allow him to talk.
Thank you. But, like I said, penny for your thought. And lastly, what I wish to speak about is this Promethean body. I suggest that I... well, we Whisperers can transport the body into your possession, Mr. Sachi, and you may... check over it and look over the things, if, to see if there's a correlation between it actually being Malius Industries' property.
Will Malius and company, uh, agree to this?
Yes, we will.
Very well.
Then, if all I have to say, we can hash out the details later.
Exactly. Right, if anything else... please rise and this meeting will be adjourned.
I will request that all council members let me know when you enter... for the next week. I need this. I am sick and tired of people entering and treating the place as their own.
I try to be respectful.
I will be more strict.
I would expect the same from you, Nemesis. As I was saying, I think you should reconsider the offer, uh, Mr. Hamsky.
Right, this meeting is adjourned. You may mingle, talk amongst yourselves. But anything...
Oh no, continue, please. Finish up.
No violence should be among here. There'll be severe punishment if there is. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
If you have a moment, Mr. Hamsky, I'd love to speak. If, if you're willing to speak.
Sorry for speaking up, Sachi.
Thoughts for you.
My bad.
You're fine.
I apologize.
Sure.
I'm gonna speak anyway.
I just want to go back to my office.
Go.
I'm just a HR representative.
Just remember, all dealings need to be ran for me now, with you.
Hamsky. Here's a disc on the phone.
Make sure the guests are well fed. Carry them.
Enjoying themselves. Bring me some.
Also, Nemesis, I need to talk to you. After.
I'm free.
Should we speak somewhere over by the side? Of course.
Nothing you say can change anything.
I'm not looking to, uh, well, maybe, maybe a little bit, but I just wanted to speak to someone who actually understands the street and fucking lives on it, rather than people with smoke up their ass for like five seconds. You probably already know this, and I don't need to point it out to you, but we're clearly both being played in this. We had a deal... and people talked about it. When people saw Whisperers about... you know, word spreads quickly and Malius is quick to get word under his belt.
I am aware.
I just... it seems all too consequential or constant, like a coincidence, is what I'm saying.
I know. How... I don't, I do not think that... the people will accept any Whisperers at the Meat Rack regardless. They are clearly manipulating us in some way, even Malius knew not to come down there and he still fucking did.
Well, there you go. You more or less answered the question yourself. How about this? We don't arrive at your place, we don't step in your fucking territory, but we can deliver the food nonetheless and do the deal, and that'll be it.
No. Not happening.
What about your food situation, then? What do you intend to...
We have always... made our own deals. We've... we've acquired everything ourselves. This was me being foolish. Trying to work with another group. I don't want them to tear everyone apart and start a war, though. Seems like they're trying to do. If you want to prove yourself, you're gonna have to find someone to do that.
I seem reasonable, do I not? If I don't bring any of my other Whisperers and I myself go, is that acceptable enough? With your permission, obviously, and an afford notice, of course. Miss Jasmine was able to trust me. I'd like to hope that you'd be able to trust me too, as someone who's lived on these streets. And I don't know if you knew this, but Jasmine would have been proud of what happened that day. She wasn't too fond of Malius either. We get shot a lot.
I can't go back on my decision. Maybe sometime in the future... once you've proven yourself, we can do another deal, but this one's fucked.
Understandable. Like I said, I don't mean to bring the whole army down, just myself. You ever change your mind on that? Or if you want to discuss more, we can.
I'll stay in contact, but I don't want to be making a fuss at this point.
Ah, well, ain't that the lovely game of it, Mr. Sachi?
It's a horrible game.
It's a horrible game. But that's the game we play.
Hello, Adima. Hey, sorry, I just don't know where to go. Oh, forgive me, I gotta talk to Mr. Toku real quick.
Are we done talking?
Yeah, we're fine, we're good. Ooh, I was gonna pat your shoulder, but, uh, I... I can't really do that with the hologram. It's weird.
Alright, maybe in the future, once you somehow prove yourself to me. I, I don't know how you're gonna do that.
Don't know how I'm gonna do that if I can't even get there. Just saying.
Well, that's up to the fucking people, because they're fucking pissed too.
Yeah, they would be. I understand that. Good luck, Hamsky.
You too.
I'm Evangeline Evans. I am the head secretary of Mr. McKay. I do most of the work.
I believe you.
And you obviously know Kion from the meeting, so we wanted to...
Like the visor. Looks good.
Thank you. I might want to talk to you.
I mean, I'm here, so sure.
Okay, give me a second.
Yep, I'm around.
I don't know who you're being controlled by. I like the words you're saying, and I don't know if you're just manipulating me.
He was representing a little his father. That's all.
If you keep saying things like you said and help the people, I feel like a lot of these people don't care about us. We can recover. As long as we work on it. But for now, you're still banned. Well, not you, the Whisperers. But please tell me if you're coming down there. So I can get my security ready. Also, I still paid 10K for that. I need that. The device.
It will be returned to you.
What? No, the parts will be there this week. That is still an agreement that was made.
And it has been taken off. He will return his money.
What? Why? For what reason?
The deal has fallen through.
It's fine. As long as I get the money back.
Tonight, if you need.
Do it.
Understood.
I'm gonna talk to someone else. Else?
I'll make this quick. I've been somewhat of a regular at your establishment before the title. Is there a day you would prefer me to? I defy you. Of all arriving, you'd prefer me on Saturdays or Sundays?
Just, if right before you come, just tell me. Out of all the people here, I trust you.
You sure? Especially.
Ah, you could change and manipulate me. I've got my eyes on it.
I already started to get used to it at this time.
No, I have noticed.
What did they offer you?
Who? Oh, Toku wanted back into my good graces or whatever. I said no. I tried to get the the thing for pollution. Because I already paid for it.
For what you told me. This isn't the first time that they're fucked up.
Yeah, but-
Especially with what you admitted.
They're a bunch of rowdy motherfuckers, that's- Whisperers. They're just like anyone that's been at the Meat Rack. They're people that are allowed to change over time. Also-
Yes, but how many times is this strike's gonna happen?
They were only minor infractions. One guy got taken hostage for five minutes. My employee. Little interaction-
At this time?
This one was bad. But! Don't fucking punish me for speaking my mind right now. That is not justice. You found two random people? That's not the people that fucking shot Malius.
A debt had to be collected. Not mine. Sachi asked for it. I had to give it to him. I owed him one. Now we're clean.
Well, I'd rather see the-
He wanted that, and I will guarantee you that I made sure that they were not harmed. The mage hunter was given specific orders to not retaliate even in open fire season. It was informed that it cannot fight back. That it was only supposed to collect two. That was it. It came back majorly injured.
Are you aware that even just-
However, the two are unharmed.
Even just sending something like that down there will get someone to shoot at it and then shoot someone else in the process.
It was not seen until it had to reveal itself.
I'm not defending the Whisperers, by the way. I'm just thinking about what I would do in that situation.
I am aware. Your opinion is good. And thankfully, I am cooled down now, slightly.
Well, I'm getting my 10K back, uh, from Aki. So, um, we're all good.
Now I can finally give you your gift.
The fuck are you talking about?
Hold out your hand. Phone with one number. That number will allow you to call a construction site. They are willing to rebuild your walls, fortify them.
Because of what Malius did?
That is what you paid for. What you've been working for. The taxes were a lesson. This is what they paid for.
You still- Those taxes need to be lowered, because people don't want to live in a shithole, which Zafira is a shithole.
Eventually, they will. However, all of those taxes are going to better everyone. The fact I've been able to make this much progress within less than a year is astonishing, esp- especially after both wars and outbreak.
Okay, well... I- I- I know it's helping, but be aware, I can't do anything if everyone leaves, because it's- they can't afford it.
Are you worried about the other cities and the fact that they're buttering them up?
Yes. Everything is nice.
I am aware of the one that is buttered up, your Amon. Miss Moon. She treats everyone with kindness and fairness. They have had the best opportunity they can, because they do not have an upper city. But eventually just takes time. It will proxy into this.
Can I be real? I do not think it's the upper city that is the major issue. You guys are at war with each other in this fucking council room.
I will show you why they are the issue. Just not now.
Okay. Prove it, then. But I- I am also aware that this room is full of people that want to kill each other. And the people that get shot-
Oh, very, very much so.
Are us.
Hmm. We've always been the one to get shot, even if it's not our choice. Even if we defend ourselves. The waterfront with the one thing that we've shown is that we eat anything, and they are all picky. We are survivors.
I was talking about- Not you. The same people that your taxes punished when I spoke up.
Oh. You mean all the corporations?
No. I wasn't-
All of them have been punished the same. In fact, uh, if you have noticed, some of them have moved out. More of them. And some of them have moved in. Agreeing upon the taxation. Being at what it originally was. Twenty percent.
How soon until the water-
There's more to my actions than what you can say. The end of next week.
I'm willing to-
I've already had people down there. Fix it.
I'm willing to trust you in this one scenario, that everything is gonna be slightly better. So prove it to me.
Hmm. The only other people we have to look out for is others.
Nah, I'm probably gonna die.
He's not gonna die. You can't die, not yet.
I'd like to talk to one more person if they're still here.
The fuck? The fuck does that mean?
Uh, everyone has to die, or something like that.
What the fu- why would you say everyone has to die in here?
Ludric just said it. Okay, look, I gotta- I gotta go. I'm gonna talk to one last person.
Hey, you wanna talk?
I don't- I might have to talk to you somewhere else.
I mean, we can go to your place, I don't mind. Let me just let Sachi know I'm heading out, okay?
Well, I'm not leaving.
Yes, no? Wanna have it later?
Let's- let's talk over here real quick.
Okay. Sorry, I have a song in my head. Anyway. I always hate church-like buildings. Anyway.
Were you spying on us?
I'm gonna stand this way. When?
Sunday.
Sunday. Oh, when you guys were in the- the room. I popped in for a bit to see what the heck was going on, because you guys were in there for fucking ever, and then I left.
Oh, it was just briefly.
Yeah. Sorry, I just, you know, I had to check that those rooms were like empty or full or whatever. So, sorry, I- I didn't want to interrupt anything.
Okay. If that's all that happened, I-
And admittedly, I was looking to talk to you, so I was kind of impatient, so... But anyway, sorry, go ahead, you were saying something?
I was in- I'm inclined to believe you. But someone said you were spying on us, so I wanted to see if you knew something.
Who?
I'm not saying names if you don't know them, but I was very aware that that room was full of people and I didn't want to have people talking. If you did hear something, please do not speak.
Hmm. No worries. I know how to keep my mouth shut. Worked for Sachi long enough. And I'm one of the only people that actually kept my mouth shut during this whole meeting.
Well, I almost had a snap.
Technically, Ludric- Technically, Ludric had a perfect record. I was- I came in like seconds.
When she said that Malius came down there and didn't expect to get shot, I was like, I mean, even my dumb ass knows he was gonna get shot. So I almost fucking had an outburst.
Look, it's- I don't think your problem is with Malius. I can explain more in a minute.
We all get all sorts of problems, it's alright.
No, it's okay.
We apologize for the commotion that we caused many times, but it was very in- insightful and interesting, uh, the last time we visited, at least when I was there, uh, in person. I do admire- These are my words, by the way. I do admire what you do for the people. I admire the admiration, the... What's the word I'm looking for? Determination? Dedication?
I appreciate that.
We are sorry for the commotions. And we will do better by the rules, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, as someone who is of HR, I do wish to apologize on the entire, uh, market district and Malius McKay's industry. We did not intend for that much commotion, if any at all. Mr. McKay is very as you know, eccentric.
Eccentric?
Some- um, I call it a migraine.
He likes to be fabulous. I hate it.
Yes. So I apologize for his coming down there, doing a surprise visit, as Malius does.
What? There's a bar? I don't think I'm gonna be long gone. I wanna go get drunk? No, no, we're still on the clock. I mean, really, you want to buy-
But, again, thank you for everything that you have done for people that you've taken care of. And I hope you continue to thrive. And if you need anything at all, contact HR in any regards. Um, here's my card if you ever, ever need it.
Thank you. I will say, it wasn't exactly Malius's fault, but he should be smart enough to know that someone is gonna cause an issue with him.
I-
And I know that.
Believe me. I know, we've tried. Well, sometimes he just does what he- He's a migraine, he does what he wants, whenever he wants to, so we do humbly apologize. We will try to make him understand, of course.
Thank you.
Yes.
He is still banned from the Meat Rack.
Beat it into the yellow.
Probably the waterfront.
That is fine. That is understandable. So, please, let us not keep you any longer than you're ready.
It is your establishment, yes. You have- you have permission- you have your- What's the word I'm looking for? It is his establishment, so it's up to him.
Yes. Permission.
We won't take you any longer. Go get drunk. Have a shot for me.
Hello.
See you, Evangeline.
Hello.
Um, I'm gonna wanna talk with you real quick, unless you're waiting to leave with this guy.
Interesting evening.
Yeah, I'm waiting for you personally, actually.
I'm sorry for being snippy and-
Okay, well, give me like two minutes.
The order of the core. I get a little-
No, it's fine.
Anyway. So. From what I can tell of this whole meeting, your problem isn't as much with Malius as it is that kid that sat in that seat? He's not really running that place.
I- I am well aware.
So, your problem isn't his- isn't necessarily Malius, it's the fact that we have a rogue gang that has maybe corp- maybe, uh, councilman's backing, but also he can't control his dogs. That is frankly what the matter is. He can't control his people.
But also, I was here last week.
So, that's your problem. But yes, also.
There is a m- a bigger problem than that. Those- those are people just like my people that are trying to survive in a city that doesn't give a shit about them.
Sure.
And these people up here
Sure.
Just fight amongst themselves.
Sure. But also, if he's running the Whisperers, he needs to hold- to control them. If he has them on their payroll, technically, they're his responsibility. Just like the people at the Meat Rack are technically Nemesis's responsibility. If you guys start causing problems, you know the other councilmen are gonna want retribution.
I know. He does need to-
And I don't know why they didn't come as hard with this guy, but whatever.
He's a little, either naive or manipu- manipulative.
Well, okay, no- Either he's one of the best actors I've ever seen or he's just weighed over his head. Which I think is the former, to be very honest.
I'm weighing over my head. So I- I can relate to him.
Yeah, but you're actually doing relatively well. Like all things considered. You have your people on a rather, well, I wanna say a leash, but you have your people under control. Your people aren't going and shooting up Sachi, or Nemesis, or Galdier, or someone, just because they can. You don't deal with that shit. You don't handle that shit. You don't deal with that shit. You don't handle that shit. And if people were gonna do that, you would deal with them. Not- maybe not kill them, but you'd at least make them know that that can't happen in your place. That's the difference between you and whatever the fuck that guy's doing. Unless he's just, I don't know. I don't know what their plan is, to be honest. I don't really care. Regardless.
I know it's not much, but he has a a good heart. If he's not manipulating, every person in this fucking room is very manipulative.
Again, he could- he could be a best liar in the world. I don't think he is.
Right, you should-
But-
I have a private message from him that was so like naive that I can't believe it's a real person.
Wait, what? A note you got a letter from?
He sent me a message.
Did he send you like snail mail?
Well, he- we did a deal.
Hi, wait, can Gildea hear this?
Yes.
Okay, he sent you snail mail?
Well-
Oh, it reverses him, okay.
We had a deal. Uh, he- He sent me a message and it sounded like either he was super naive or he was trying extremely hard to relate to how dumb and dirty I am. That- that's generally-
Well, I don't normally deal with the plebeians, but-
No, not like that. It was- I- I really wanna-
Oh, really?
It was more like, "Uh, we got this air ventilation system for you." Uh, oh, I hate the name of that. Looks like ion.
That's not an ion. Okay, don't worry about it. Anyway, I'm just making sure they're not like just like a creepy figure that's about to walk towards us and murder us in our place. They're the last people here. Anyway, go ahead. Sorry. Look, I was checking my back the entire fucking time. It's security shit. I'm trained at this point. Sorry, go ahead.
I feel like I'm gonna die in here, though, so I feel like I should leave after I say this. But he said air ventilation system and then he said, "Wait, I don't like that." Smasher is walking.
Is this like a voice con thing?
No, this was- it was a- I just, every time I read it, I can't help but mock it.
Wait, he- so he actually wrote this? He actually wrote those words?
He said air ventilation system and then he said, "Wait a minute, that sounds so nerdy." Uh, the air thingy that pushes air around or something like that. That's the general gist of the message. I- he dumbed it down extremely.
Sorry, they're doing things. Don't worry about it. I'm sure they're doing things. Anyway, um... Okay, well, that's he needs to get someone to write it. He needs the secretary.
Look, I know, I think it's just young. Like me a year ago.
I'm young.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean I don't know my shit.
Also, you know what? I don't wanna talk in here. This place is probably bugged to the fucking roof.
The walls do not have ears. I imagine this place of all places would be pretty secure and Sachi says I'm inclined to believe it. Unless. Sorry, I'm looking for a secret like you press a button and it like pops out like something. I don't know.
If I've learned anything-
Oh, it's that one. Okay, so.
Alright, I'm gonna go.
Gildea, you're gonna say something. Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, you're like Sherlock Holmes.
Yes. I'm gonna flick you on the forehead.
Why are you gonna flick me on the forehead?
Don't be a shithead. If you wanted to listen in, you could have just asked and we'll flick you in.
What?
Roderick also has a look this. He's able to scan runes on the comparative. There's an odd cold spot behind Yorick. I only know of two people.
I mean, okay, yeah. Okay, so that's the thing I said. Okay, cool. Yeah, alright. No! I refuse.
Listen, if Sachi chooses you to be here we have a lot in common.
Hmm. Let's spread that around. We don't need the rest of them knowing. Although they do now, but still. The other guys might get antsy.
Well, this room makes me-
See, this is why I like you, Gildea. You're a general, not a politician. Anyway.
Tok'ra, dumbass.
Hey, man. Yo, what the fuck hurt me?
We've been calling him a dumbass since his character began.
Yeah, you led me into leadership.
I- I- fucking I did. I would have had no fu- I would not have let that happen, motherfucker. I bailed so goddamn quick.
Well, fuck, I'm blind. I was gonna go fuck him, you know? Cause I saw them sitting on the bench.
Athena- Athena was pissed because, uh, Aki didn't wanna talk to her. And he just walked away and said, "Sorry, I don't wanna talk right now." And she felt so let down. And then- and then every- everyone else talked to him and she was like, "Damn, these motherfuckers are" "I wanna kill them." But, uh, you wanna go to the meat rack?
Yeah, we could do a scene here.
Do you turn real quick? You wanna see- you wanna see the mage hunter, specifically Henry? Cause he's actually changed the caress of the others. Okay, I wonder if we can see it. Alright. Alright, alright, alright. So, can we see it? No, fuck, does anyone have a light? Why is it so dark in here? Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. I hear it. Hold on, where is it? Uh... Here. Here we go. Okay, I found it. Uh...
Is this the light? Sachi said that you'd have to do it. If I was to look like you. Oh, no.
Okay.
What does that say? Henry. Says Henry. Oh.
It was written by a four-year-old with crayons. So, lo- look at Henry here. Just look at him and I'm gonna say one word. You're gonna be mad. You ready?
Oh, oh, Luna.
Yeah, well, look at him now.
Sachi told me that you, me, you would have to do it if I was to look like you. Yes. Come on, man. Jasmine would want me to be there. You know that. I know you're very busy.
My boy. My sweet boy.
They would make me stick to my decision. Instead of like backing out.
Oh, okay. Oh, he'll- he'll bang that over here.
Motherfucking get on my ulster, bitch! Oh!
Oh, shit.
I gotta say, the whole aesthetic is ruined by the fire axe.
It's like, I need to just come on.
Never. I wouldn't even be able to lift them out of my ulster. Just like
Bro, wait. You'd be able to take off like probably a shot, but by the time that happens
Bro, when- when you were a hologram and, uh, what's the other- the other councilman was like gonna come in on the TV, Hamsky was just like, "What the fuck? I'm here gonna- about to die every time I talk?" It's just ridiculous.
No, you're fine because guess who was right behind you the entire time to protect you? Todd! As a mage hunter!
Todd is sadistic. He would stab me.
No, actually, he was- he's- he's like fully permitted to keep you up. You!
I yield. Don't shoot me.
Oh, too late.
Fuck! That was point blank in my face! All I could see was white! I was so abrupt! Fuck! Oh, I'm seeing a little white lens in my face.
You know the- you know the little lycan side of the Black Rem RP? The really small flying dolls?
I guess Percy knows who it is now. Fucking, uh, what is it? He fucking dropped the name. Uh, what is it?
I wa- I started thinking I shouldn't have said it to you when I saw him trying to talk to you. I was like-
Uh, is your stuff magic, by the way, or is it- is it a bi- biological more?
Damn.
My stuff's biological too.
Laser.
This one. You, Matt.
Yeah, yeah, give me one second, one second. What were you doing? Are you like, did you like have a knife on your gun thing?
I didn't see it.
Cool!
What, what?
Oh! What the fuck?
Yeah. She just killed a bitch. She just killed you.
Stabbed me?
I've been waiting this entire time for someone to get me onto the ground just so I could be like just like into their fucking gutters.
You guys all take care. Thanks for everything.
She was going to handle it all, I know. She was gonna do this the whole time. Completely just
Two. It's all because of this fucker. He allowed me to do it, so thank him.
But then she's like, you know what? No, I'm feeling there was a lot of people saying shit. I'm gonna say some shit. And that was the one thing she was like, I'm gonna say this one thing.
I had to buy a new thing.
Not yet.
Five- or track track plus.
Oh, okay, so we'll see. We'll see in a minute.
I wanna go. I wanna leave. I wanna go.
Yeah.
By the way, you're all kinds of slumped with some reason. Your foot's twisted.
Ooh, what the fuck?
Ooh, what the?
Can I dance? Why? Haven't-
I'm not in Fobali, dude.
You're doing this- yeah, you're crumpling and your hip is in one spot.
What the actual fuck? Hold the phone. Huh?
What is happening? Looked like this the entire time, by the way. I'm just kidding, so.
No, I wasn't Fobali earlier.
By the way. Fucking teleporting to the fucking-
I'm checking my SteamVR right now. All my three trackers are off and I'm pressing the menu button. I'm not reset. I don't even have to sit or standoff. It's great out.
The boy is here.
What the huh? Oh, my god.
Oh, art looks good. Oh, fuck, yeah. Gorburger.
Let's go. Uh, yeah, Venus. Not Athena, by the way.
Yeah, I know. I was joking.
Yeah. Yeah, you- you're just- you're just on your way home.
On- okay.
You can actually- you can actually drop a portal for me. What else?
Bruh, did they change the menus?
Dude, I love these meetings. These meetings are all my joy.
This- my heart is pumping and then when someone says something that pisses Hamsky off, it's just like, "Oh, okay, don't say anything. Nemesis will kill us."
What this bitch say? What this bitch say?
I almost interrupted the representative of Malius.